Evening Walnut Hills families. My name is Shawna Murphy and I am the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education for Cincinnati Public Schools. I am so glad you're able to join us tonight. Also today on this video call, we have Principal Chambers with us and we also have Attorney Dan Hoying joining us tonight. The purpose of this is to talk with you a little bit and to respond to any questions you may have concerning the Board's decision for not only Walnut Hills High School to stay in distance learning at this time, but you may already have heard the news that because our county, Hamilton County, is red in terms of its health status, our superintendent made an announcement late this afternoon that our entire district will remain in distance learning for the near future. So at this time, I want to share with you Dan Hoying and he's going to talk to you a little bit about how the conversation will be managed tonight. Dan?
Thanks Shawna. Welcome everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening. Good to see lots of Walnut Hills friends have, are tuning in tonight. So this platform, which you've seen before, if you've seen any of our Board of Education meetings, gives us the ability to, it's a live stream, so you're seeing it on a very short delay, but we have the ability to bring folks over to ask questions or make comments live. And so you can click on, I think it's a hand icon, but it's a request to participate live. And once you click on that, we can bring you over so that you can ask your question. We'd ask that you keep your microphone muted until we recognize you and then, you know, one at a time, we'll recognize folks to ask their question or make their comment. There's also a Q and A function, which you can certainly ask questions and we'll try to get some of those published and answered tonight as well. We may be able to answer some of them live. I, we can ask, you know, I can sort of see those questions as they come in and ask Assistant Superintendent Murphy or Principal Chambers. Or we can try to type some answers out. There's only a few of us on tonight, so if we don't get to all of those, be assured, we'll make sure that we cut and paste these into a document and get as many of the questions answered as, as we can. So with that, we've got a few people who would like to participate. John, you, you may want to introduce yourself too and say hi to your families to start.
Say good evening families. You know, I'm Principal Chambers. I want to, you know, thank you guys for tuning in tonight. Hopefully we could answer your questions and, you know, give you more information as we continue to move forward through the remote learning. So, good evening.
All right, Dan. So do we have any questions in the chat maybe to start us off?
We do, and we've got some attendees who have also asked to participate. So as I'm bringing them over, there's a question already about testing, what the current plan is for students to take PSAT, SAT, ACT tests?
Well, we are currently working with our Walnut Hills Test Coordinator Maria Horn. And to, what we're looking into is to provide an opportunity for our 11th grade students to take their PSAT test here at Walnut Hills. So as we finalize that information, we will be getting it out to the families to let them know what that process is to have those students tested. As far as the ACT and SAT, we have canceled any testing that will be at the site here at Walnut for the month of October. But moving forward, you know, from that point on, we're just unsure. It depends on the number of students we'll have requesting seats and how many we can safely accommodate.
Okay, great, John. Shawna, there's some questions about, you know, what kind of what the current planning is into the second semester. Is there plans yet to allow for face-to-face instruction in the second semester? Or what do we think at least right now, what that looks like?
So of course, as you know, we were very excited to try to get our children into a face-to-face situation. The situation with Walnut Hills is purely based on safety and numbers. And so until we can return Walnut Hills students back safely, we'll remain in a distance situation. Our Board has determined that six feet is the benchmark for being able to get students in the school building. And as you know, the class size on average at Walnut Hills will only allow for us to put about nine students in a classroom, which is what led the Board to make their decision specific to Walnut Hills High School. Now, at this point, the rest of the district will remain in distance in the near future based on the Hamilton County health level, which we are red at this point. So until we at least flip back to orange or until we get to the point where we are able to get all of the students in the buildings, we'll remain at a distance level.
Great, and I'll just follow that up. There's another question about kind of what other options were considered. Somebody asked a question about whether we considered using vacant buildings. I'll just say from the PLTs, from the leadership team in the district, I mean, from the beginning of the summer, we considered almost every option you can think of. The district does not have, we have at various times in our history had lots of vacant buildings, but right now, given the high enrollment to the district and, you know, some buildings were sold off in recent years, there really are no vacant buildings. There's almost every building, no, I think every building in the district at this point is occupied in one way or the other. But we explored using everything from Duke Energy Convention Center, we talked to Xavier, we explored all kinds of different options. Ultimately, as Shawna said, the Board's number one priority was, was this distance of six foot. So we do anticipate that, you know, when and if we return to in-person instruction, it'll be, it'll, you know, the Board will maintain that kind of six-foot distancing as a, as a priority. Shawna and John, we've got some folks who have come over and have either questions or comments, so if it's okay, we'll go to some of them.
Okay.
Start with Sean Kelly, followed by Amy Shuck. Go ahead, Sean.
Thanks, Dan. So the, the PSAT that John, that Principal Chambers mentioned for 11th graders, will that, that will take place on the original October 14th date? Is that right?
That is the plan at this point, yes.
Excellent, thank you. And then as far as the, and I think it was a great decision that the Board made, the district made, to remain virtual for now. Is there a larger plan though, to look at right sizing Walnut Hills and making it so it's a beneficial learning environment for all the students who are there so that it does have the proper number of students per campus size?
So Mr. Kelly, prior to COVID, the leadership team had been having conversations about how to do expansions for Walnut Hills property. And so again, that was prior to COVID. It was not a conversation being held due to six-foot social distancing per CDC guidelines in this situation. I am sure when we are able to, we will return to that conversation as we know that there are a large number of students currently at Walnut Hills and there is a huge demand for Walnut Hills.
Thank you. Oh yeah, this was, this was a problem long before COVID.
Yeah.
It's been overcrowded for years. So, but is that a long-term goal of the district to right-size Walnut Hills? Let's just take COVID off the table for a second. Is that, is that a, a goal of the district?
I would say there is a goal of the district to deal with the size and the demand for Walnut Hills High School. I don't know, Mr. Kelly, about using the term right-size, but I know that there has been a desire to address the number of students enrolled as well as the demand for Walnut Hills education.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Kelly. Tends to be, and it's a credit to Walnut and John and his team, but it tends to be, I think, that families that are at Walnut would like to see, you know, the, the numbers decrease. The families that haven't yet gotten to Walnut always are concerned about decreasing too much because they are so anxious to get their families and their kids into, into the school. So, good question. There's one follow-up I saw, written question, and John, maybe you can answer this. What's the current number, enrollment number that we have at Walnut this year compared to last year?
We are roughly 90 kids fewer than we had last year.
Thanks. I'm gonna go to another one of our, I'm sorry, one of our folks who would like to speak, Amy Shuck.
Hi, um, yeah, I was like, I was very happy with the plan to stay virtual for right now due to the fact we're concerned about the AP classes and the AP test. I have a son who graduated in 18 and I have a daughter who's a junior this year. And she last spring was, did not feel prepared for the AC, or for the AP test, not due to the teachers by any means, but just the lack of face-to-face contact, not having the weekend review sessions that they had in the past. So I guess my question is, she has a lot of anxiety already about the AP test this spring. Is there ever a thought that maybe this year we could exempt the children or the students from taking the AP if they feel they're not ready? I mean, we obviously entered her into AP classes because we felt she was capable. She's doing, has done very well grade-wise in these classes. But as far as being prepared for the test in April and, or May, has there been any consideration about making that optional for these students due to the circumstances of not being face-to-face?
Well, Ms. Shuck, the, the AP test, you know, the guidelines are given to us by College Board. And, you know, College Board, you know, in the spring, they work with the schools to try to make that test as, you know, fair as possible, given that most of the schools went to remote learning in March. However, you know, with the, the current schools' situations that exist throughout the country, I'm sure that they will modify the test to fit the circumstances that we're in. And, and last year, they did give students an option to opt out of taking the test if they didn't feel prepared. But it is, you know, it is our expectation that the kids take the test, but if they're not comfortable, we will not force any kid to take the test.
Okay. I just, I wasn't under, I, I mean, my son graduated 11 AP credits, so we're, we're a huge proponent of the AP test, but my daughter's kind of a different child who has a lot of anxiety about school and it's, that anxiety has already started, even though we said to her, if you don't pass it, you don't pass it. It's not the end of the world, but I just wondered if that would be an option for those students who just aren't feeling ready for the test. But thank you very much.
Thanks for your question, Ms. Shuck. Next, we've got William, followed by Jason Moser. Go ahead, William.
Right now.
Our child.
Oh, hi, are you there?
There you go, William. We can hear you now, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. I, I haven't heard of a rough timeframe, like for example, for planning for our family's future, what we're gonna be, how our son's gonna be taken care of over the next couple months and so forth. Do we know that we will not be back before the second quarter, second semester? Or has there been any sort of like a timeframe that we know that we won't be back before a certain date?
Yeah, I know tomorrow, the leadership team will be working together. And so hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow, we'll have a better idea of timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'd add, we would never, none of us on this call would ever want to get out in front of our Board of Education. The Board was prepared to, you know, we were prepared to return to in-person instruction for some of our students starting next week. The Board had determined that Walnut would remain in distance learning for a period of time. So I, I think it's fair to assume that that, that will, when we return, that, that is still likely to be the plan. But again, the leadership team will be meeting, the Board meets again on Monday. The, the, the information and data that comes into us is, is so rapidly changing, you know, again, at, at seven o'clock last night, when we were all wrapping up the Board meeting, we would have thought we would have been in-person for schools starting, starting next week. And, and then as of today, there's a change. So, thanks for your question. Our next question comes from Jason Moser. Go ahead, Mr. Moser.
Hi, thank you. I was wondering if, would you be able to explain to me why the live streaming five days a week, regardless of whether kids are in the building or not, doesn't work? Just on the normal seven bell, seven bell schedule that we typically have? Kids could be in the room, kids could be at home, but the teacher just streams set five days a week? We've proven that the teachers can stream from the building over the last month. We've proven over the last hundred years, the kids can sit in a room without taking up bandwidth. I'd heard that some of it was they'd be needing to use YouTube while they're in the classroom, but I don't think that's necessary if the teacher's instructing. I, I feel like that would allow us to solve for the, our two highest priorities separately. The, how do we get the kids the, the best instruction, the most instruction time? Would kind of be, we could solve that separately from how do we best ensure the, the health, social and emotional welfare for the kids? And it enables things like the ABCD, but still getting five days a week instruction.
So, Mr. Moser, we definitely appreciate that question. We want you to know the leadership team is digging into that on a deeper level. I would encourage you to tune in if possible to the Board meeting on Monday as our Chief Information Technology Officer, that may not be the right title, will be doing the presentation for the public and he will speak much better than I'm probably gonna be able to articulate to you tonight.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Moser. Our next speaker is Shawna Russell Cargile. Go ahead, Ms. Russell Cargile.
Hi, how are you all? So, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine, thank you.
Okay, good. So, my concern is, you know, this word, remote learning doesn't work for every student and my son is one of them. You know, he did, he, he's one of those that needs structure and he needs that in-person connection. He needs somebody on him. I fortunately have a job that is a work-from-home job and always has been, you know, before COVID. So I'm fortunate to be here with him and kind of be on him, but I'm also on and off conference calls throughout the day. So, you know, he, and it's, you know, me and him, pretty much. So my concern is, I mean, what are we doing for students? Like, I feel like there just should be some sort of leniency with this online learning, given that this isn't for everybody. So I just kind of want to know if there are gonna be some bending of the rules, you know, where assignments are concerned and, you know, testing and that sort of thing.
Great comment, Ms. Russell. Thank you for sharing that. I would encourage you to stay in touch with your child's teachers, especially when your child is having any difficulties at all. And the more we know about those difficulties, the more we can work with you to problem-solve and find solutions.
And, and I am good about that. I, I definitely, you know, like I said, I'm one of those parents, I'm, I'm on it, you know, like I'm, you know, what I don't, what I've had a problem with here recently is the schedule keeps changing. And sometimes, you know, I get the emails and I've emailed Ms. Russell like a few times because the schedule has changed and I do check my email regularly, but sometimes like, I, I mean, I get a ton of emails unfortunately in my email. So, when the schedule changes, like when there's a holiday, that throws us off. And that happened like in the beginning, that happened to us like twice where the schedule changed. So, you know, that sort of thing, I kind of don't like because it's like, you know, why can't we just have this consistent schedule? Like, I mean, when there's a holiday, why do we have to change, you know, that Wednesday? And then there's another communication that comes out and you know what I mean? It's, I appreciate so much the communication. Mr. Chambers, thank you so much for, you know, always, you know, keeping us in the loop, but sometimes it's like too much. And especially with this all being new, like it's, it's just been a little overwhelming. My son's been frustrated. I was frustrated. I'm better now, because we're, we're starting to get used to it. But I hope we can get to a point where, since we're gonna be doing this for a while, that it's just a consistent schedule and it doesn't keep changing.
Yeah, we're, you know, there was, you know, you know, several days in this, the first, you know, six weeks or so of the remote learning where, you know, there were, you know, some holidays and things like that, so we had to adjust the schedule. But I think, you know, moving forward, there should be a lot less of that, you know, because we will have a more consistent schedule because the, we won't get into so many holidays. So I would say just, you know, hang in there and, you know, just give me a call or send me an email if you, you know, have a, you know, a concern that you want me to take a look at.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks so much. I think both those comments were really well articulated, the, the concern about the consistency. I mean, we've, we've been hearing that as well. And it's just this sort of balance of, of trying to, you know, have a consistent plan, but also try to do everything we can to get students back into in-person learning as soon as we can. And so your second comment about, you know, especially our higher needs learners, trying to get them back, I, I will say that part of the, the district's plan for returning students to in-person instruction involved getting, you know, again, some of the highest needs learners, the students with disabilities, the disability classrooms, and the English as a second language students back as quickly as we could as well. Thanks very much for your, your question.
I'm sorry, can I?
Oh. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Of course, yes.
So with that, that last comment that you, you made and getting back earlier to the other comment concerning, you know, keeping in touch with teachers and stuff, I mean, again, my son, like, he did really, really, really well, like, in, you know, in-person. His grades have like went down a whole lot, this like midterm grades. I mean, they, they were, they took a, you know, 360 turn. He was on a 504 plan prior to coming to Walnut, but when they evaluated him, because he was doing so well in his classes and he was in advanced classes and doing well in those classes, all that, they, they wouldn't, you know, give him accommodations. So, should I talk to then the advisor about giving him accommodations now? Given that he's now in this online learning and it's not feasible for him?
Ms. Russell, send me an email.
Okay.
So, you know, I can, you know, have the information and I can pass it on to the, the correct people.
Okay.
And, you know, we'll be in touch with you about, you know, setting up some interventions that we, you feel might be able to help you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm done, thank you.
Thanks again. John, we've got some questions about sports and extracurriculars. I'll say that the announcement today with respect to schools remaining for remote instruction next week, I'll also advise that for now, sports would, would continue. Parents would make the decisions basically on, on whether or not to continue having kids participate in athletics. What's going on with extracurriculars at present?
Right now, the, there's a very, you know, there's a few, you know, different clubs and non-athletic extracurriculars that are, are happening. We're slowly bringing more online to, you know, and, you know, to involve more students. But, you know, until we got, you know, permission from the Board just a couple of weeks ago to be able to start having those, those non-sports extracurriculars, you know, begin to have, you know, some, you know, semblance of meetings. Some have been meeting virtually, but we are, you know, in the process of trying to bring some of those clubs that need that in-person, you know, type of atmosphere, some of the more competitive, non, you know, sports clubs. So, you know, just stay tuned. I would say in the next, you know, few weeks, we will be bringing more of those different clubs, the next extracurriculars online.
Great, thanks. And then somebody asked about winter sports. Shawna, I don't think we've heard anything yet from OHSAA definitively about winter sports. And I know they're still, they're just about to get the fall sports playoffs and, and tournaments underway. We haven't heard anything yet on winter sports, have we?
That's correct. I agree with you, Dan. No word yet on any winter sports at all.
Okay, great. Our next question comes from Angela Smith. She'll be followed by Tarifa Wint. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, I, I was a big proponent of the virtual model for many reasons. The ABCD model, obviously that had to be done for safety, but there was an issue with the, too little in-person time. Another issue is that if the teachers are teaching the same thing four times, they don't have time for any good downtime content creation. And live streaming would seem like it would be the answer to that. So I wanted to follow up a little bit on Jason Moser's comment. Live streaming is a great idea if it's really good, but it seems like the district has invested a lot of money in technology with the one-to-one laptop relationship. And that's great, but not having cameras is a big deal. And the experience educationally is important. So right now, in this meeting, we're engaged with each other. We all feel like we can talk and interact, but a contrast to that would be the Board meeting last night where it seems like even though there's a cameraman present, you're live streaming a classroom of people per se. And it felt really disconnected, like as a watcher, you're just watching. You're not engaged, you're not, you're not really sharing the screen, you're more like seeing the screen. So if we don't have good live streaming ability technology-wise, then how can we make that work in a meaningful way? And my question is, who decides that? Who decides? Do you test a classroom experience? Because if you watched the Board meeting last night and if you thought about that, like, that's what a livestreamed classroom looks like if you don't have the right technology with, you know, some schools in Cincinnati actually have robotic cameras following the teacher around at the same time that they're sharing screens. But how do you decide that that is what, that, that you can convey meaningful content through that delivery mechanism?
Dan, that's above my pay grade.
So, good question, thank you. And, and it's above my technical knowledge, but we've been, Shawna and I have both been a part of the meetings really all summer and the beginning of the school year in which, you know, we're exploring every kind of option. My understanding, and this is a rough understanding at best, you'd be, you'd be wise to tune in to Jeremy Gollighew's presentation on Monday at the Board meeting when he'll be talking about just this subject. But, but my understanding is there's limitations on the capacity of the network, that it's not necessarily a device limitation, it's not necessarily a platform limitation. We've got lots of different platforms that we've been using, you know, for these kind of meetings, for Board meetings, for classroom sessions, but that especially in, so, so we've been able to do, I think, lots of live streaming with teachers, not, not live streaming, excuse me, like remote classroom kind of interactions with students, but when students aren't in the building. When they are in the building, which was our plan to start next week with in-person slash remote. When they are in the building, which was our plan to start next week with, uh, in-person slash remote blended instruction, that there's just so much that, that the streaming as well as students' use of devices in the school, uh, takes up so much capacity of the network that, uh, you, you know, the fear was that that, that would, uh, you know, be over capacity. And so we've heard feedback from so many parents that what they really want is to be able to stay in their same school and to be able to, uh, participate remotely. And so, you, you know, Jeremy and his team have been working very hard to provide that option. Um, and, and to create the limitations that would be necessary in order to, you know, offer that option without overloading the system. And, and again, my understanding, very, very light technical, but, but my understanding is that's, that's essentially what he's prepared to talk about on Monday. Donna, do you have anything?
I was only going to emphasize, Dan, that really in fairness, to get the technological response. Um, Jeremy and his team, those are really the right people to give that, uh, information. And I would just encourage you, if possible, uh, to please try to listen, um, to the meeting on Monday. I don't, um, mean to sound like a broken record at all, but really, um, they have the best expertise on that.
Okay. I think it's not just a bandwidth issue. I'm saying it's also a content issue. Right now, the content is really high quality and engaging and it feels like a one-on-one. It feels more like a one-on-one teaching situation than something like the board meeting felt last night. Like, you know, we, we are simulating right now what our kids are seeing in a virtual model. And last night would be, um, if we were live streaming a classroom, it's kind of like, you know, my dad's standing in the corner filming me talking to a class. It's, it's not as effective.
That's good perspective, Ms. Smith. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, our next question is from Sharifa Wint, uh, followed by Jill Fisher. Go ahead, Ms. Wint.
Hi, good, um, evening, everyone. Um, my question and also to, to, um, Bill on what Ms. Russ had spoke about, about the remote learning. I'm one of those parents that work for that, um, that is for the remote learning because it may, it basically avoids, um, my child getting in contact with any, um, of, um, any, uh, any other person as well. So I'm all for that. But my concern is, um, with the five days a week that, um, is being taught, um, with on Google Meet on Wednesday. Um. I realize that there's no class on Wednesday, um, except for probably one. Um, for him. He's a new student at Walnut Hill. And so I'm not familiar with all of your different, um, applications or stuff. I'm still familiarizing myself with it. But I'm concerned that the Wednesday, on Wednesdays, he does not get, um, he's left alone to his own devices. And my child is a person who you're not behind him. He does nothing. So, and, um, I'm not saying that he did well and, and I'm great, I'm grateful for that. And I know the teachers are, are doing their best and they're doing all and they're engaging him. And when he has class and, and I'm really grateful for that because I'm seeing where he is engaged. And I do work from home. And, um, as, um, like Ms. Ross, um, I have, um, my Zoom meetings, conferences and stuff like that. And I have to be constantly checking in on him and back out again. But I'm just not really liking the Wednesdays where there's not much class. He's left to his own. I can't be monitoring him for that period every single time while I'm working. So that's just one of my main concern as to why we do not have, um, a class, classes with the teachers on, um, on Wednesdays.
Well, just to clarify, Wednesdays are, um, designed as check-in days for these students. Um, the students, um, are, um, you know, required to check in with their teachers, you know, for all of, uh, all seven, all seven bells are checking in on Wednesday. And the, um, and that day is designed to give the teachers an opportunity to engage with the students in a non-instructional manner. It's to build those relationships and to, um, you know, try to, you know, create a sense of community, you know, without having the students in person. And then this, the teachers will have, um, you know, some professional development type opportunities in the back half of the day. So the, um, it is not designed as a day to introduce new content. But it is just a day designed for the teachers to have the ability to check on the kids, to see how they're doing. Um, more from a mental aspect than to be delivering new content. So that's what those Wendy, Wednesdays are designed for.
Uh, but it's optional for, um, for the child. So if he, um, so if that child doesn't log on to meet with the teacher or even converse to find out anything, then.
No, it's not optional. He, he should be logging on. It is not optional for the teachers.
Okay. Well, that was my understanding.
No, it is not optional.
Okay. Well, I guess I need to revisit him on that then because, um, I'm, I'm constantly asking him about wire. Cause I'm seeing they have the, the different bells probably for a, a, or so, um, or afternoon, sorry. Um, for each of these different bells, but he's, he doesn't log on. He, but I, um, he said that because he doesn't need to ask any questions. So. Um, he doesn't need any assistance with anything. And that to me is, is. It, 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 it doesn't instill confidence.
We need to revisit that, that Wednesday.
Yeah.
And it, and it's also an opportunity for the, um, you know, the students to reach out to their, um, to the counselors and, um, the teachers that, um, you know, if they need any assistance, they can do that as well. Um, so, you know, you know, you need me to give you some more, um, you know, information, you can please send me an email and I'll get that to you.
Okay, um, we'll do because, um, that was, that was one of my main concern, um, about that Wednesday. Um. That Wednesday, I, or cause I realize it is used, um, 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 mostly for like a holidays in the sense where he will get classes where they're, um, switch for whatever, like Mondays. If Monday's an holiday and they'll switch that, the, the Monday schedule, um, for the Wednesday. If, um, there's an holiday or so, so. Okay, that's good to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, one of the questions we've gotten in the comments is, uh, I know we, you answered the question earlier about the current plan for ACT SATs. What about, uh, semester exams? Any thought yet on, uh, what that might look like? Uh, i- i- I guess if we are still in a remote kind of, uh, environment?
That is, um, something that we are, um, discussion, discussing with the, uh, school leadership. And it is going to be, you know, it looks like it's going to be something that we're still remote. It's going to be done, you know, differently, teacher to teacher and how that, um, those exams will be, um, implemented.
Okay. So stay tuned on that. Uh, our next, uh, question comes from, uh, Jill Fisher. Uh, Ms. Fisher will be followed by April Flessa. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
Okay.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Um, I just have a suggestion. It sort of piggybacks on the last conversation, um, about the Wednesdays. So I wondered, obviously with the, the Hamilton County turning red. This may not be as appropriate as it was the other day, but I wondered if there was any possible, um, thought of enabling students, um, if needed to make an in-person appointment with a teacher if they were having some challenges with their classes. Um, I know my kids sometimes have a question, but on the Wednesdays, when everyone's logged on, I think, and I'm not sure, but I think the questions are where everyone can hear. And some kids aren't always comfortable sharing their difficulties or challenges in front of the whole class. And I wondered if, um, if all safety precautions were in place and if it was by appointment only, um, if that might be a consideration.
It is, it is possible. Um, yeah, I do have, uh, the, uh, the other administrators on the, uh, call and we are taking down these types of, uh, questions. And we will, you know, really take a look at if something like that is possible, but we'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, our next, uh, caller is April Flessa. Ms. Flessa, go ahead. You'll be followed by Natalie Witcher. Go ahead, Ms. Flessa.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Great. Um, I have two students at, uh, Walnut Hills. Um, one is a senior and a shout out to the counselors, um, for the information they sent out just today on college planning. That was excellent. Excellent. Um, it's a stressful time, um, and the counselors have been, um, we've been kind of waiting for that information. So I really appreciate that. Um, having a senior though, I think, um, now that we know we're going to be remote, um, for at least till the end of the semester and possibly the end of the year. Um, I would encourage that, um, there's something done for these, these kids that really, it's just sad. They're just not having the year that they should be having at Walnut Hills. And I know, Mr. Chambers, you feel the same way. Um, so I, if there's anything we can do, I encourage the school community to do it.
Absolutely.
Well, thanks. Your, your comments are echoed by some of the questions we've received as well about, um, you know, we know how high up expectations Walnut has. So, uh, that, that's echoed in, in some of the comments as well. Um, our next speaker is, uh, let's see, Natalie Witcher. Go ahead, Ms. Witcher.
Hello. Good evening. Um, so I, you know, I'm very concerned, um, about the, um, content, like, uh, uh, instruction that our, our children are getting. Um, and if all of the content is actually being covered. Um, I, I was hoping you could explain to me why, um, they're not having the seven bells every day. Cause I know that they're not getting the amount of time, a classroom time that they normally would get. And so I am very concerned about, um, our children fall, falling behind, um, not being prepared for ACT, SAT, for the AP courses and just genuinely being, um, uh, ready for college. So I was hoping I could, I could get an explanation on why we aren't doing just the seven bells every day.
Well, part of the rationale of us going to, um, the block schedule was to allow the students to have more time with their teachers in a given day and less responsibility to log on to seven or five, five, six or seven different classes. Um, and with the, uh, the district advising each of the schools to limit the screen time with the students to, um, four hours. If we would, if we were to maintain our seven bell schedule, the students would have five to six and a half hours of screen time. So we felt it was necessary to create a schedule that would maximize the amount of instruction time the students would have with a teacher while not requiring those students to log on to the individual classes every day. And in theory, I mean, it's, it's more like a college type of schedule versus a regular, uh, seven bell high school schedule. So rest assured, the students are getting the content and the instruction that they will need to be prepared for, um, for college in the case of the seniors and, um, for the AP exams as well as the, um, the ACT and PSAT and all those different, um, types of assessment. But we felt it was more important to make sure the kids had, you know, not only the instruction time, but the, the, the flexibility of not having seven bells a day to, um, you know, to help them a little bit more mentally instead of just concentrating on sticking in 50 minutes of instruction every day.
Okay. Well, that, that's fair. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and I actually just want to, uh, second what Sharifa was saying about Wednesdays. So I actually, it was my understanding, of course, through my daughter, that, that Wednesday was not mandatory. So, um, so I, and I, so, uh, I think it'd be great maybe for, for some clarification on that with our students. Or maybe, so anyway, just FYI.
I do, I do want to, uh, clarify, um, I may have misspoke, but the, uh, the teachers are basically telling the students, it's a, it's a check-in day and if the students don't necessarily need to check in, either the wellness check or, um, an academic check-in, the students, you know, are, they have the ability not to check in with that particular teacher. But they do, they, you know, will, you know, check in with other teachers that they do have those types of concerns with. So, um, we'll be getting some, um, some other clarifications out there to our teachers to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Hey, thank you very much, Ms. Witcher. And we next have Laney, followed by Ted Renneker. Go ahead, Laney.
Hi. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, Daniel, you were introduced as lawyer, Daniel Hoying. And I'm just curious what capacity you are here lawyer. You work for CPS?
Yes, I'm the lawyer for CPS, but tonight I'm here because I've run the, uh, Blue Jeans events thing before, so.
Dan is here tonight. Tony Hoying is here, not as an attorney capacity. He's here because I am not able to, I'm not trained on running a Blue Jeans event. He is, uh, as someone for the board and I needed assistance and he volunteered his evening. That is why he's here.
Okay. You know, I was a little worried. I was just kids, you know, curious about that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I sound like I'm in the minority here, but I'm one of the parents that, you know, wants to see our kids back in school, does not, is not a fan of the virtual. Um, and I'm, you know, I, I'm more wor- I'm not, I'm less worried about AP scores. I really, I'm more worried about the entire, you know, the health of the students mentally and their wellbeing. And, you know, AP scores are important, but like, that's not my main focus. But what I'm really, I mean, my, uh, my mind is blown by this and I really do not understand is how sports can be in session, but school can't be in session. Like I, I have nothing against sports. I think it's great sports are in, but I, it literally makes no sense. Like how is sports, sports can go on, yet you can't do the fundamental thing, which is teach our kids in class. It doesn't make sense to me. And I know there's not going to be an answer for that, that is going to be satisfying, but what about, I know the principal said something about clubs are going to be coming back and some of them are virtual. But if sports can practice every day, why can't the kids meet for a club? I mean, I've got a daughter who this is her first year at Walnut. I'm sure there's plenty of parents who have kids that are, you know, going to seventh grade for the first time, that they don't know anybody. Why are kids allowed to practice sports and to engage in sports, yet they can't even go to school? And why are they, you know, are things like theater going on? I- if they are, like, are, is there some kind of announcement? I mean, where is the information for, for this kind of stuff for new students? Like, uh, uh, it makes no sense that sports is the number one thing when sports is not. I mean, like it, why is that being prioritized? I, I just don't understand that. And again, I have nothing against sports. I'm all for sports, but for parents that don't have kids in sports and they're seeing their kids not leave the house because they're not, I just, I, it, uh, there's like a total disconnect there that either I don't see, or maybe something else is going on that I don't understand. But maybe just help, help clarify that for, for me.
That's a great question. Great point, um, and important to clarify. Uh, please understand the leadership team, I have, we've had many conversations about athletics and extracurricular activities. Uh, please understand the leadership team, I have, we've had many conversations about athletics and extracurricular activities. The board has had public conversations about athletics and extracurricular activities. And when we step out our plan, we look at our plan even from the spring. Uh, we started with athletics very slowly. Um, and there were guidelines put in place that we expected all of our athletic directors and coaches and our student athletes to follow. They did a fantastic job following that through the spring, uh, and the summer. And as we began to return to school, uh, you may or may not know. We were a little delayed, um, in comparison to other schools, districts, sports teams around us. Because we wanted to take, um, strict precautionary measures in terms of following every possible guideline. To make sure our student athletes, uh, remain safe. So our plan then shifted to getting the kids back in school, back in session. So that's the trajectory we were on. It's not that we necessarily prioritize athletics over academics. It's just that the usual things that would have taken place, uh, we came up with a plan to step those out. Well, now, uh, we're in the situation where we're not able to do six feet of social distancing within Walnut Hills High School. And then, uh, compound that with the fact that today the governor announced, uh, our county is red. And so that is stopping and preventing the rest of the district even from coming together. We did, uh, Ms. Laney, have conversations about how to bring back extracurriculars as Principal Chambers mentioned to you. Um, we may have to slow that down a little bit more. Um, from what we wanted to do even just yesterday. So we appreciate your patience with us as we try to get this right for all of our, um, students. Uh, both student athletes and non-student athletes. I, I hope you can try to understand.
I don't understand because I a hundred percent support athletics, but I don't understand. Why the other clubs and people that aren't athletic don't get the same priority. Like, so the extracurricular, I see sports as an extracurricular.
Yeah.
And why, so maybe the other clubs are going on, if they are, I don't know about them. I don't know how my daughter's supposed to sign up for them, but how, why are they not? At the same priority level as sports?
Let me just say this, um, real quick, um, Ms. Murphy. Uh, we're working on a variety of, uh, different plans, you know, to engage the students socially. And, you know, before, uh, the announcement back to red, it, um, you know, it's kind of, uh. You know, is making us look at it, um, a little different direction. But, um, in tomorrow's, um, Eagle Flyer, you'll see club information in that, um, edition. We do have clubs that are currently, um, meeting, um, now, uh, virtually. And those things were, um, um, the clubs that are meeting virtually, they're all listed in Schoology, um, you know, for the.
Are the, is sports meeting, is sports meeting virtually?
No, they're not, but you know, we're, I'm just trying to, you know, let you know, it's what we are, you know, what we can do. Within the, you know, the confines that we are, you know, working under to, uh, to try to engage our students socially. I mean, it's not.
Do you understand my frustration?
I totally do. I really do.
Because if I don't have an athlete and all, you know, all these kids are going and seeing their friends and doing all this athletics. Once a week, twice a week, three times a week, five times a week, yet all the other kids that can't go to school. Because Walnut Hills decided they don't have enough room and my kid isn't, is it in sports? Then I, they should have the exact same things for theater, for other things, for the kids. I know somebody said something about steel, steel drum bands. I don't know anything about that, but. That should, you should, and again, I, I a hundred percent on board with sports. But there should be no reason why sports should take. Precedence or have more importance than the other things. So virtual, is it an answer?
Yeah, thank, thank you for your call and, and really, it, everything you said, it's a fair point. Um, and, and, uh, you know, I hope you tune into the board meetings because, um, what, what you're saying is absolutely right, a fair point. Um, that there are, there are other, uh, folks who have, uh, participated in board meetings as well. Uh, so many from Walnut Hills who have, have spoke just as passionately about getting, getting athletics started again. So, uh, I hope you'll tune into the board meetings, but, but mostly I appreciate kind of the level of, uh. Dible discourse on, on tonight's meeting. So thanks for your participation. Uh, Shawna and John, we've got time for at, at least one more question. So Ted Renneker, you're next. Go ahead, Mr. Renneker.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
That's not a lot of pressure being the last question. Um, so thank you for giving up a little bit of your time. Uh, Laney, I will say to you, you're not the only parent that wishes the children were back at school. When I think, I think most parents, even the ones that said they prefer the remote option. Would prefer their children at school with the remote option or the A, B, C, D model is what, is what I hear. So I, I happen to be a parent of four students in four different schools. Um, the high school and grade school. Three of them are in full-time in session learning in the classroom. Um, being managed perfectly well. I realize that that's a decision beyond the three of you, that that's a board-level conversation. Um, so my frustration with that is, uh, is probably misplaced in this, in this audience. Um, the question I do want to ask though is around, is around. Um, managing the school and the success of the education. Whether that's measured in AP tests or other standardized tests, there's a million standardized tests, whether that's year-over-year testing. Um, I'm assuming as school leaders and school administrators, we've got plans in place where we're monitoring student progress. Um, and how they're learning now versus how they learned in previous years. We're offering the right level of support. There should be statistics, right? We're offering the right level of support to teachers that might be struggling. Ms. Murphy, you readily admitted that you're not great with the technology. This is why Mr. Hoying is on the call. That I'm sure there are some teachers that are great with the technology and others who very much struggle with it. Um, so how are we assessing this teacher's, uh, education has declined? This teacher's education is holding true. Here's my buddy system of how we're going to do, how we're going to support this. Here's, and Mr. Chambers, you mentioned this optional check-in day. I would assume there's statistics. That say, here's how many students are checking in and how often and which students aren't checking in and which teachers are having check-ins. And there's monitoring, my, my concern is I'm seeing the education my Walnut Hills student is receiving. Is significantly less right now than my other three students who are in classroom. And part of that's probably on him, um, because he has to have a, a responsibility to do some of these things. Um, but, but I'm curious as school leaders, what are the statistics you have? How did AP test results happen last year versus previous years? Our standardized test happening? What are year-over-year testing? What teachers are really engaged? How are you monitoring, supporting and, and making sure we're doing the right thing? So, so, because you can have a high-quality education remotely, but I, I'm not seeing that that's happening consistently.
Well, I can, you know, I can speak for, you know, you know, the school administrator and the, you know, and the teachers in the school. Um, we have a tremendous amount of support. Excuse me, my lights just went off. Um, we have a tremendous amount of support from, uh, the teachers in the building for their, their colleagues. Um, we do have teachers who are, you know, you know, more tech savvy than, than others. And those teachers support the, the teachers who may be less so. Um, if you look at the, um, and we looked at the, the statistics of the, the remote learning from this past spring. To the remote learning that we've had this fall, and it is light years difference. And if you look at the level of engagement of the students, the amount of resources and the different, um, you know, avenues that the teachers explore remotely. I mean, it's just, um, you know, night and day. So, and we, and we do, um, you know, monitor the, um, the success. Of the, uh, remote learning process and we do look, you know, for opportunities to improve where those opportunities exist. But I would assure you, you know, the teachers are very well aware of where their students are in their individual classes.
So, Mr. Chambers, I would say that I'm not necessarily seeing that. So if you have those statistics, if, you know, I think transparency would be good. If you can share AP test results in macro, and obviously not per student, right? How many got fives or fours or threes versus previous years? If you can share any standardized test results and you can share, you know, we have students on average check-in for, for two hours per day. Um, on the Wednesday check-in and, and there's seven check-ins on average. Any of those statistics that you have, you can share. I'm, I'm a little nervous about the, the four-hour limit recommended by the board. I don't know if that was a mandate to Walnut Hills. Walnut Hills is not a traditional CPS school. It is not the same. You do have to test in. It's college preparatory. I know firsthand, my children are not limited to four hours of screen time per day. I've seen it many times. That they can greatly surpass that limit. So, so I. You know, if that's a, if that's a mandate, then that's a conversation I'd have with the board. If it's not a mandate, I would challenge, I would ask. For more information to demonstrate how Walnut Hills is being successful in this model. I realize you cannot make a decision to bring students back to school. But how are we being successful or are we being successful in this?
Mr. Renneker, I'll, I'll finish this up with, um, you know, I, I do a state of the schools, um, address every year. And it's normally later in the spring or later in the fall, I'm sorry. And, um, you know, I do share, you know, all of the, uh, the state testing data as well as the AP, ACT, um, SAT. And, um, you know, you know, any of the other, um, you know, assessments that our students take. And so, you know, if you stay, stay tuned, we're going to be announcing when that state of the schools. Um, meeting for our parents, you know, will be, of course, it will probably be virtual. But I still will be showing you, um, all of the data that we have from our kids from, uh, last year. As, um, compared to pre, from this, this current year, last year and previous years. I do a five-year, um, uh, window of looking at our data across, um, five years. So I'll be more than happy to, um, share that during the state of schools.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Renneker. Thanks, John. Thank you, Shawna. Uh, anything you want to wrap up with here, John or Shawna?
I just want to say thank you very much, uh, to the families, the parents, guardians who joined in. Uh, tonight, I'm appreciative of Principal Chambers making sure he shared, uh, the information with families in terms of how to join us. I am especially appreciative, uh, of Tony Hoying for working with me to be able to not only answer questions. But to help me be able to facilitate this, uh, conversation. I hope, uh, that this was somewhat helpful to our Walnut Hills family.
And I would like to echo that and say, you know, have a good evening, everyone, and we look forward to, you know, tomorrow's learning.
Really appreciate that, but yeah, the high level of discourse tonight. So thanks very much to everyone who participated. And, uh, tune in on Monday night for the board meeting. So thanks, everyone. Good night.